Good evening. Welcome everyone to the October 7th, 2019 meeting of the Stillwater City Council. I will call this meeting to order and I will ask you to join me in standing for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag-
To the flag of the United States of America- And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we've got a couple of fun proclamations today. The first is for Fire Prevention Week, and I think we have a special guest to help us proclaim it Fire Prevention Week here in Stillwater. Sure, right there in the front. We can only assume that's either Counselor Wedlake or Vice Mayor Darling telling you this. Thank you all for being here. I'll go ahead and read this proclamation. Whereas, the city of Stillwater, Oklahoma is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting Stillwater; and whereas, fire is a serious public safety concern both locally and nationally, and homes are the locations where people are at greatest risk from fire; and whereas, home fires killed 2,630 people in the United States in 2017, according to the National Fire Protection Association; and fire departments in the United States responded to 357,000 home fires; and whereas, the majority of US fire deaths, four out of five, occur at home each year; and the fire death rate per 1,000 home fires, reported to the US fire departments, was 4% higher in 2017 than in 1980; and whereas, when the smoke alarm sounds, Stillwater residents may have less than two minutes to escape to safety; and residents who have planned and practiced a home fire escape plan are more prepared and will therefore be more likely to survive a fire; and whereas, Stillwater residents should make a home escape plan, drawing a map of each level of the home, showing all doors and windows, and should practice the home fire escape drill at least twice a year, during the day and at night; and whereas, Stillwater residents should make sure everyone in the home knows how to call 911 or the local emergency number from a cellphone or a neighbor's phone; and whereas, Stillwater residents, in a real emergency, should get low and go under the smoke to get out quickly, and should get out and stay out, never going back inside the home for people, pets, or things; and whereas, the 2019 Fire Prevention Week theme, "Not Every Hero Wears a Cape: Plan and Practice Your Escape," effectively serves to remind us that we need to take personal steps to increase our safety from fire. Therefore, I, William Joyce, the mayor of the city of Stillwater, do hereby proclaim October 6th through 12th, 2019, as Fire Prevention Week throughout this city; and I urge all the people of Stillwater to be aware of their surroundings, look for available ways out in the event of a fire or other emergency, respond when the smoke alarm sounds by exiting the building immediately, and to support the many public safety activities and efforts of Stillwater's fire and emergency services during Fire Prevention Week 2019. Thank you all. I'll present to you the proclamation and we'll have to take a picture with Sparky, right?
Mayor, I'm kind of wondering what they've been putting in Sparky's puppy chow. He's lots more demonstrative this year than he was.
All right, our second proclamation is for Public Power Week. Lauren, where's your furry, you don't have a...
Bear come on.
We gotta get you guys an outfit.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah.
Sparky might work on that.
Well, he might work on both.
Just give him a different outfit.
All right. Whereas, we, the citizens of Stillwater, place high value on local control over community services, and therefore have chosen to operate a community-owned electric utility, and as customers and owners of our electric utility, have a direct say in utility operations and policies; and whereas, Stillwater Electric Utility provides our homes, businesses, social service, and local government agencies with reliable, efficient, and cost-effective electricity, employing sound business practices designed to ensure the best possible service at competitive rates; and whereas, Stillwater Electric Utility is a valuable community asset that contributes to the well-being of local citizens through financial support of the general government; and whereas, Stillwater Electric Utility is a dependable and trustworthy institution whose local operation provides many consumers protections and continues to make our community a better place to live and work, and contributes to protecting the global environment; now therefore be it resolved that the Stillwater Electric Utility will continue to work to bring low-cost, safe, reliable electricity to community homes and businesses, just as it has since 1901, the year when the utility was created to serve all the citizens of Stillwater; and be it further resolved that the week of October 6th through 12th be designated Public Power Week, to recognize the Stillwater Electric Utility for its contributions to the community, and to educate customer owners, policymakers, and employees on the benefits of public power; and be it further resolved that our community joins hands with more than 2,000 other public power systems in the United States in this celebration of public power, which is best for consumers, business, the community, and the nation. In witness whereof, I have set my hand and affixed the great seal of the city of Stillwater the 7th day of October 2019. Thank you guys very much. Hold on, Lauren.
Now it's time to smile.
It's unofficial, we don't have a picture.
They all run off.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much. Thank you, sir.
Okay, that takes us to item four on the agenda, which is our consent docket. Counselors, are there items you'd like to remove from the consent docket?
Mayor, I would like to remove item L.
From the consent docket?
Item L, all right. I will ask to have D, E, J, and K removed from the consent docket. There's a lot of items on the consent docket tonight, most of them are either minutes, some budget amendments due to receiving grants, which is great. These other items we'll talk about here in a second. So is there a further comments or a motion on the remaining consent docket items?
Motion to approve the consent docket with items D, E, what was the other one, Mayor?
J, K.
J, K, and L removed.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent docket minus those items. Please vote. We voted three to zero, the consent docket's approved. All right, public comment on items not scheduled for public hearing. I don't think I have any of those. I think everybody signed up for either a hearing or another issue tonight, so we'll jump on down to item six for items removed from consent. Counselor Zanotti, why don't you start with L?
All right. I always like to acknowledge a quarterly report, and this meeting, we did the Stillwater History Museum at the Sharar, and I wanted Stephen Goes to come up. We have a new director of this wonderful gem in Stillwater, so Stephen, I wanted to give you the opportunity to introduce Amelia if she's here.
She's not here.
She may have gotten caught up.
Stephen Goes, I serve as the president of the Board of Directors this year for the History Museum, so thanks for pulling this off. Amelia started with us first to last month, she's our new director, so if you get a chance, come by, it's free admission Tuesday through Saturday, 11 to 5, so.
And I think in November, you've got a Native American.
Yeah, in November, we're partnering with the Wonderatorium. There'll be a couple events throughout the month. On November 17th, the Payne County Historical Society will talk about some Western history information, and then October, so this month, next week, we've got a new exhibit featuring 200 years of color quilts, so there's quilts coming in from around the nation that'll be displayed, so.
Well, welcome to Amelia, and I just wanted to field it to do that. You bet.
Excellent, thank you. We don't have to vote on these individually, right? Can we do them all, or should we vote on them individually?
Actually, I think you're supposed to vote on them individually once you've pulled them.
That's a good point. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve item L from the consent docket.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve item L, please vote. With a vote of three to zero, that item is approved. All right, let's do item E and K, because those are both Chief Watts. Thanks for being here, Chief.
Good afternoon, Mayor, and councilors.
Could you just tell us a little about the hearing protection and the gun range project?
Item E, which was- The hearing protection for our special operations team. It is a special type of hearing protection, allows them to operate their police radios through the hearing protection that they're wearing under their helmets. We had originally budgeted $35,000 for that, we had a $5,000 donation, and we budgeted $30,000 in our budget to cover the cost of that, and unfortunately, like a lot of things, the price went up before we could get them ordered, they had changes in technology, and so the price went up to $39,350. We had a total of $6,900 in donations for our SWAT team, so we wanted to use all $6,900, and then we were going to offset the remaining cost of $2,450 from our drug seizure funds to cover the rest of that. So we're just going to combine all of that money together to purchase those hearing protection for our SWAT team.
Thanks for the explanation, appreciate it. Any questions on that item, councilors? You want to go ahead and tell us about the gun range, too? And what we're going to vote on?
We were in the process of doing some renovations and updates at our gun range, and that happened during the time that we had all of the floods, so there was some items that we were purchasing to take out there that we couldn't get out there because we didn't have roads, and as that money came back in a refund, we just wanted to add it back to that range project so we could finish it out. It was $466.93 in a refund check from Stillwater Building Center.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Counselors, any questions? Is there a motion on item E?
Motion to approve item E, which is a budget amendment appropriating funds to purchase hearing protection for the Police Department's special operations team.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve item E, please vote. With a vote of three to zero, item E's approved. Is there a motion regarding item K on the gun range?
Motion to approve item K, approving the budget amendment appropriating funds to continue the Stillwater Police Department gun range project.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve item K, please vote. With a vote of three to zero, that item is approved. Let's go to item D, approve roof replacement for Lakeside Golf Course clubhouse and onsite residence. Mr. Scott, how are you tonight?
Good, you?
Good. Tell us about the golf course.
We've got a leaky roof. We've been having some problems with the roof. It's been there a few years. This spring, we had some storms that hit, tore off some remaining portions of the roof, and it was just time to give up and start over. So we requested three quotes, and the amount that you see for the budget revision was the lowest quote to replace that. It'll take it down to, take everything off that's there and go back with new. It will do the clubhouse and the residence that's out there also. Both of them have damage.
Where's the money? Which budget amendment or budget line does it come out of? Do we know?
I don't know. Sorry, Gerald.
Good evening, Mayor and councilors. This roof repair will be coming out of the capital improvement plan, and we had some unallocated fund balance in that plan to, I think it was $56,000. So we will reappropriate part of this for this roof repair here.
Okay, thank you very much. Any questions, councilors, or motions?
Motion to approve item D for the roof replacement of Lakeside Golf Course clubhouse and onsite residence, and budget amendment appropriating funds in the amount of $31,153.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, please vote. With a vote of three to zero, item D is approved. That takes us down to item J, approve budget amendment allocating funds for the reconfiguration of the Finance and Utility Building Services Department. Kristi Klop, how are you?
Good. Good evening. So the Finance Department has been lucky enough to add a couple of staff members recently, and this has led us to surpassing the number of workspaces that we have in our work area. And so we were looking at some alternatives for seating arrangements for our new employees. All the while, Dana Maddox, our Utility and Building Services Director, was also looking at reconfiguring some of her workspaces, and so we got to talking and realized that I could use some of the parts that she no longer needed from her cubicle spaces to build out and allow for two more workspaces in the Finance Department. And so the costs here of $42,000 include the reconfiguration of my space, the reconfiguration of one of her spaces, includes the electrician to come in and turn on and off power during that reconfiguration, and then we also have our recommending replacing the carpet while we have everything torn up, because it hasn't been replaced since City Hall was remodeled in 2002.
Okay. And do we know where this, is this also coming out of Capital?
This is coming from the Capital Fund.
Excellent. Any questions, councilors? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve item J, the budget amendment allocating funds for the reconfiguration of the Finance and Utility Building Services Department.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, please vote. With a vote of three to zero, item J is approved. All right, just for future reference, I've asked staff on consent docket items for anything like this where there's a budget change, even though there, you know, a lot of these are fairly small amounts given the budget, it's always good to have this conversation. So we'll have those on general orders in the future. That takes us to seven, public hearings. Item A, receive public comment regarding request from Shoeb Sheikh for a specific use permit for property addressed at 712 East Gate Street, Zone Commercial General. This is CC-19-145. Mr. Dormand, did we have good notice on this item?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. Hello, Lance?
Yes.
How are you?
Good, great. Thank you. Let's see, the specific use permit before you tonight is for 712 Southeast Gate, and it's for a computer and electronic product manufacturing facility. The map on the screen, the yellow hatch mark indicates the subject site. It's currently zoned CG Commercial General, and an SUP is required within the CG zoning. This is a bird's eye view looking to the north. The subject site has the yellow boundary, and it's directly to the south of the P&amp;K equipment. And right now, I'd like to introduce Shoeb Sheikh. He's going to come up and explain his application.
Thank you. Good evening, council. My name is Shoeb Sheikh, I'm one of the co-founders of Explosive, and this building that we applied the permit for is going to be a new headquarters for our operations for the company. If you remember, last May, we had actually worked with the Chamber and committed in purchasing a land and building a building on the new technology park. That plan is on the shelf as of now, and due to some unfortunate, I guess, banking requirements, so on our side, we found an alternative location. This building is 11,500 square feet. It's double the size of the facility that we work with the Belize right now. The facility that we work out of right now is a 6,000 square foot facility, 1,500 square feet of which is heated, cooled, and insulated. The other 4,500 square feet is not, so it's a challenge working in winter and summer in Oklahoma. So this facility is going to be a good upgrade in terms of workspace, it's going to double the size of available working capacity, and is in line with our growth plans for the future. We also have a second company in town, which is located on the west side of town, Max Q, that is leasing a 9,000 square foot facility, so we do definitely plan to go back and build a new building at the site, at the initial tech park. So this is going to be a whole over until we do that, and eventually both the buildings will be used by the two companies.
Excellent. Counselors, any questions for Mr. Sheikh? Thanks for being here, Shoeb.
Thank you.
I guess at this point, I can open the public hearing. Do I want to hear, yeah, let's go ahead and do that. At this point, I'll open the public hearing. I don't have anyone that's signed up for this item, so I'll close the public hearing. And now Lance, after I made you get up and sit down, could you tell us about the Planning Commission's recommendation?
Sure. The Planning Commission made a recommendation for approval by a vote of three to zero.
Counselors, any questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve item CC-19-145.
Second.
With a motion and a second to approve this item, please vote. With a vote of three to zero, that specific use permit is approved. Item 7B, receive public comment regarding request for a specific use permit from Vertical Organics for a medical marijuana dispensary, for property addressed as 801 South Perkins Zone Commercial General. This is CC-19-146. Mr. Dormand, do we have good notice on this item?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Lance?
Yes. This application is for a medical marijuana dispensary located on South Perkins. The yellow hatch pattern indicates the subject site. It's zoned CG Commercial General. It's on the southeast corner of Perkins and Eighth. This is a bird's eye view looking to the north. You can see Eighth Avenue running east and west, and Perkins running north and south. And right now, I'd like to have Andrea Meister come up and explain her application.
Hi. Hi. Thank you for hearing us about the special use permit. Does it enter to, it's our thing, okay, we had some pictures to show you if you want to see them. Awesome, okay. Okay. What do I need to do to pull it up on the screen? Sorry, I should have-
Just up and down?
All right, there we go. Okay. This is 801 South Perkins, just a couple blocks south on that on cue on Sixth and Perkins Road. This is going to be our third dispensary to open this year. Let's go down here, so that's the building now. We've already made quite a bit of changes. One of the things, one of our brand standards is we take older buildings, like just maybe above the teardown, maybe gentrify them a little bit, it's something we've gotten to be good at, so this is the before picture. We've already painted it, put a new roof, in the middle of doing the parking lot, it's taken forever with all the rain we've had. There's another view similar to Lance's of what it looks like with Eighth and Perkins, right down that corner. We're redoing all the concrete, and we've got maybe like a third of it done. This is just a floor plan of the entire property that we submitted to Lance and his guys. There's a little blown up version of the building here that, just give you how they built out, it was an old, I guess they, a metal building place had it before us, but before that, it was built in 65, it's an old garage. There's actually some kind of cool architectural, like an old engine left, we're leaving that are just real neat. This is just some stuff about us, our website, it's, we're kind of proud of our company, we do a great job as far as marketing and, you know, on the higher end of our industry. We've got, this is a picture of our farm, it's a couple hours east in Porum, Oklahoma, Facebook, Instagram, just more references for what we do. We like to be philanthropic with some of our stuff. We participated in the Pride Parade this last June in Oklahoma City, I know that's Norman. We are not open in Stillwater yet, so we'll do the same thing here. We did, that was some reason, so we like to get involved as much as we're allowed to. This is a bit, this is our dispensary that's in Norman, it's on the corner of Main and Mercedes, right when you're going into town, that's what it looks like now, this is what it looked like before we did it, so it was another kind of ugly building that we spent a lot of time just, you know, changing the elevation, updating it, lots of cool finishes. This is our Lakeside, this is our second one that we opened in July, it's in the Village in Oklahoma City, it was an old place called Raspberry's and Cream, so I don't know if you're familiar with the city, it was an old restaurant. The before of that kind of looked like this, and then we also are in the middle of working on the, that's in Edmund, on Broadway, and we've got it painted. That's, we're a little further ahead on Stillwater than we are on the Edmund, but that's the two that we'll be opening the rest of 2019. We do some real pretty finishes on the inside, just some, you know, higher end furniture, we just make it real nice inside, everyone's real comfortable, kind of boutique feeling. So we use fish a lot because we use aquaponics, and how we out at our farm to fertilize everything, and so you'll see like fish chandeliers and fish on our logo and just things like that, so that's where the fish come in. So yeah, but that's what we do. That's our last picture of just kind of our opening day in Norman, which is on May 6th, so yeah.
Excellent.
Yeah, so if you have any questions, let me know, and I've got Tommy with me, too, so.
Excellent, I appreciate you being here.
Yeah, thanks. It's fun to be here.
Looks like you guys have done some good remodels.
Yeah, thanks, guys, appreciate it.
Any questions, councilors? Thank you. I will open the public hearing, I've got no one signed up, so I'll close the public hearing, and I will ask counsel, I'll ask, do we have planning commission recommendations on these?
I can't remember.
We've done 25 of them, I don't know why I can't remember. What was the Planning Commission's recommendation, Lance?
Let's see, the Planning Commission made a recommendation of three to zero for approval.
Thanks, sir. Counselors, comments or motions?
Motion to approve items, or item CC-19-146.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve this specific use permit, please vote. With a vote of three to zero, that item is approved. Takes us to 7C, receive public comment regarding request for a specific use permit from Doctors Orders LLC for a medical marijuana dispensary, a property addressed as 211B Perkins, Unit 10, Rosewood Shopping Center Zone Commercial Shopping. This is CC-19-147. Mr. Dormand, do we have good notice on this?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Gross?
Yes. This is the specific use permit located on North Perkins, and the black hatch mark indicates the subject site. It's in the Rosewood Shopping District. Hall of Fame is to the north, running east and west, and Perkins is on the left. This is a bird's eye view showing the actual location of the proposed dispensary. It'll be on the east end of this particular building. And right now, I'd like to call up Howard Hindren to give an explanation of his application.
Thank you, Lance.
Good evening, Mayor, and councilors. My name is Howard Hindren, and I am one of the co-founders of Doctors Orders LLC. I am a Stillwater resident of 30 years, as is my partner for his lifetime. We hope to showcase local growers of the medicine through our dispensary and help people make choices with their healthcare with regards to what they opt to take for pain management. Not a lot to really say about it, I'm sure you guys have had a lot more before us, but we are local gentlemen here, and we're looking to do something a little bit different with helping people with their pain.
Thank you for being here.
Yeah, any questions?
Appreciate it. Any questions?
Thank you.
Lance, what was the planning, oh, I'll open and close the public hearing, there's nobody signed up. Lance, what was the Planning Commission's recommendation on this one?
The Planning Commission made a recommendation for approval by a vote of three to zero.
Thanks, sir. Counselors, comments or motions?
Motion to approve item CC-19-147.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve, please vote. With a vote of three to zero, that specific use permit is approved. It takes us to 7D, receive public comment regarding request to close 12 and a half feet of right-of-way on each side of Southwest Street from Fourth Avenue to Sixth Avenue. This was continued from September 9th, 2019. It is CC-19-141. Mr. Gross?
Yes. Let's see, this is the closing request for the 400 and 500 block of Southwest Street. The hatch pattern indicates the area of consideration. This is broken up, this is the northern half, it's from Fourth to Fifth, and on the map, you can see the hatch mark on both sides of the street, that's the 12 and a half feet requesting to be closed, and this would essentially bring the right-of-way from 100 feet to 75 feet. And the same goes for the area between Fifth and Sixth. And I'd like to call Stephen Goes up to have him explain his application.
Thanks, sir. Welcome back.
Thank you. Good evening again, Stephen Goes with Goes &amp; Associates, 113 East 8th, here on behalf of our client, Presley LLC. As was alluded to earlier, this is a continuation of the hearing we had about four weeks ago that got tabled to get some more information out and have a neighborhood meeting. We're requesting to close a 12 and a half foot strip on each side of West Street in the 4 and 500 blocks. A similar request was made and approved in October of last year for the two blocks to the north of- the north of this, so from Maple to Fourth. And that was done when St. Andrews Episcopal Church was looking to build a parking lot at Third and West. So, this just continues that all the way down. Our client has property in the 400 block, but we went ahead and made this request for the 400 and 500 block just to get it through in one push so that you all don't have to see it again, the property owners in the 500 block wouldn't have to make an application, and we'd have a uniform right of way width through there within the form-based code area. And I understand a little bit of the south end. It's not form-based code, but I think it's just the south half of that 500 block. We did have a neighborhood meeting last Tuesday. One property owner showed up, a couple that's immediately adjacent to our client's parcel. We talked through their concerns. At the end of the day, they were fine with it. If this request is approved, the next step is to file suit in district court. That's where the actual transfer of the right of way would go back to any property owners who participate in that request. Nobody has to do it. That's not an all or nothing. That's a per-property request. So, a staff report seemed generally okay, except the comment about in the third paragraph that the intent is to do something similar to what's developed on West Street or Walnut Street. That's not part of the consideration here. We're asking for this closure to get some more developable land. So, are there any questions?
No, I just want to point out, because I think there was some confusion about this last time, and I actually had a question about it afterwards. When we talk about closing a right of way, we're not closing any part of the street. We're actually giving 12 and a half feet of the land back to the owners on each side of the street.
We're allowing them to go to district court and take that back if they would like it, yes. And it's a partial closure, so.
So, the city's right of way for the street will go from 100 feet wide to 75.
Correct.
Okay. Thanks for going back and getting us more information. We appreciate that.
No problem.
Counselors, any questions for Stephen at this time?
Thank you.
Thanks. At this point, I will open and close the public hearing. I don't know if anybody signed up to speak. And Lance, is there, was, did this go back to planning commission? Did this go to planning commission?
It did not.
Okay. Is there a staff recommendation?
There is. The request is to approve closing request in the 400 block only, and that mimics the original intent from the, from, I guess, the September 9th meeting. And the whole intent was to, you know, get some input from the property owners along the 500 block. And I attended the meeting with Stephen, and, you know, we just, we had a couple of people there, but, you know, nobody from the 500 block was there. But, you know, there was no...
Notified the people in the 500 block?
Yes. Yeah. Yeah. But, you know, I guess there were no...
If we approve it for the 500 block, like Mr. Gose said, it really just gives them the ability to join the suit. If they don't want to, they don't have to.
Exactly. Yeah. It's a two-step process. The second step is optional.
Okay. Counselors, any questions for Lance? I mean, it makes sense to me to make this uniform all the way down. If we're going to close the 400 block, we should close the 500 block as well. So, that's, I don't know if you guys...
I agree with the mayor. I appreciate going, Stephen and Lance going back and at least having that meeting with the property owners to have that information out, but I agree with keeping it consistent.
Is there a motion?
Motion to support the staff recommendation to approve CC-19-141.
Well...
Or...
Because the staff recommendation was just 400 block.
So, 400, so Fourth Avenue and Fifth.
That's what we were just...
Okay. So, motion to support the staff recommendation for the request of the 12, of the right of way on each side of Southwest Side, West Street from Fourth Avenue and Sixth Avenue.
Second.
Do we get that? I think we have a motion to approve the request to close 12 and a half feet of right of way on each side of West Street from Fourth Avenue and Sixth Avenue. Please vote. We have a motion and a second. Oof. We got that one out. Three, with a vote of three to zero, that item is approved. Everybody clear on all that? Do we get that in the record well?
Sorry.
That's all right. Okay. That takes us to item eight, general orders. Appeal of Planning Commission denial of a short-term rental permit for property addressed as 2117 East Crestwood Avenue. This is brand new for us. This is our new short-term rental permit process, and we had one that was challenged or objected to by the, by neighbors, and it went to planning commission. And the planning commission denied it, and now it's to us for appeal, correct? That's where we are?
Go appeal. So, you'll be hearing this as if it was, it's a matter of first impression. So, burden still rests with the applicant to present evidence in support of the application.
Okay. Is there a staff intro here, or am I just calling up the speakers? Lance, do you have an introduction?
Yes, the recommendation by planning commission was to not deny this application. And the, essentially, the applicant filed an appeal, and the appeal comes to city council for review, so.
Okay. Well, we have, I think, the applicant here tonight. I can't find your name. Ms. Weisler? Weiser? I'm sorry. Hello, thanks for being here.
Hi. Thank you for having me.
I don't know where I put the piece of paper that has your name on it, but I'm sorry.
That's okay. My name's Angela Weiser. So, and I apologize, I'm a little nervous, so I'm going to be referring to my notes. I just wanted to give you a little background. My husband and I purchased the property at 217 East Crestwood on August 1st. It had been a rental for many years and a little bit rundown. Because of poor experiences renting long-term in Stillwater, we were looking for something that we could fix up in an area that would be appealing to people who needed to be in Stillwater for more than a day or two, but less than six months. We knew the house needed some major work, including some drainage issues, and heating and air needed to be replaced. The day following closing, we met with different people and contracted to address the drainage issue and install a new heat and air system, all during August. The day after closing, we submitted an application for a short-term rental permit and requested a certified list of properties within 100, 300 feet, which was completed the following week. After receiving notice, Ms. Hilton said she would oppose the permit because she believed it violated the covenants and bylaws, and that was her only objection made during the 30-day review period. We prepared to address the issues in her complaint at the planning commission meeting. However, a major issue of concern to the commissioners was a drainage problem, and that although it had been improved, it's still, we still needed to work on it. During the meeting, Commissioner Bukart, did I pronounce that correctly? Asked the staff if it was possible for us to address it and immediately reapply. He was told that we could reapply as early as the next day. However, since the ordinance allowed us to apply for a hearing, we did that first. And finally, on background, prior to today, we've had only three tenants in this property, one long-term and two short-term. We have prevented any further reservations that extended beyond the 90-day licensing period by the city. There was a press release, and it's also on the city website, that you do not need an air permit until the 15th. So, at this point, I'd like to address each of the areas on your checklist, some of which we've grouped together because they seem to go together. The first one is neighborhood compatibility and neighborhood character. Crestwood Estates is comprised of about 113 homes and 34 vacant lots. About half of the homes now are rentals, and this number has been increasing for at least the past four years. The house that we purchased had tenants in it for many years, and we would like to continue to have tenants in it, some of which will be short-term. We have a letter of support from a member of the Homeowners Association and former board member who ran an Airbnb for years in that neighborhood and sees this as a preferable, sees this as preferable to many longer-term rentals. And I think you have a copy of that letter? Okay. Another item is traffic conditions and parking. These streets are relatively narrow and have limited parking on them. The Homeowners Association asks its members to park two cars in the driveway and one in the street. We include the same restriction in our listing in Airbnb. We limit tenants to no more than three unrelated people in the home. We drive by the home frequently and have rarely seen a tenant's car on the street and never more than one. There was one occasion where we drove by and there was a car with a trailer on it, but the tenant had pulled well off the road so that cars could easily pass. We honestly hadn't even thought about trailers being parked on the street, but since then, we have now prohibited that in our listing as well. The drainage issue, which was brought up during the planning commission. So, the property maintenance concerns that Commissioner Bukart suggested that we first address before reapplying. There was also an implication that we had not been doing anything about that drainage issue, so I just wanted to give you a little bit of history of what we were trying to take care of. We closed on the property on August 1st. On August 2nd, we met with a contractor and reviewed the home inspector's report. The contractor agreed that a French drain and dry well on the west side was a reasonable way to address the problem. We hired him that day with an estimated two-week completion time. After the work started, it was discovered that the small slab outside a back door sloped slightly toward the house, aggravating the situation. That was replaced. Major regrading was done, and the drain completed in August. During those lovely rainstorms we had this summer, the dry well overflowed and backed up because of the density of the clay soil. After further discussion, we added another drain to the east side, tore out the original drain that had been done, and replaced it with a different product that carried more water to an open termination intended to run to the street. The drain on the west side was terminated about five feet from the end of the road. We believe the contractor did that because that's where the original drain was, and that's also where our neighbor's drain is currently. This did not work. Even though we were helping the drainage problem, we were having other issues. Once we were made aware that during a heavy rain, some dirt had gotten onto the road, we went and assessed the problem again. And the day after, we extended the drain and butted it up to the road's edge. We spoke to neighbors on either side of our property to apologize for whatever mess had been made, and they seemed to be very understanding and honestly didn't really seem to be affected by it very much. I do have pictures of the property now and what we've done with the drainage. Would you like to see those or not?
Sure. Since you brought them?
It's completely empty. We began working on the pre-existing drainage issue literally since the day after we acquired the property, and it's taken more time and money than we had ever anticipated. If there are any other issues, we will address them as quickly as possible. So, I've shown you the pictures. We, those pictures we took this morning, and we had a pretty heavy rain this past weekend, and we felt like it is addressing the issue and taking care of it. Landscaping is another topic of concern, and so the landscaping for this home is typical for the community and well-tended. Since you do have the picture, you can see that we are taking care of it. During warm months, we try to mow every one to one and a half weeks. The rain does not always cooperate with that in Oklahoma, so we're trying to get that done as quickly as possible. Lighting is typical for a house with a motion detection light that covers the driveway. Welfare perfection, protection and safeguards. We are in frequent contact to our neighbors to the west, Shawnee and Daniel. We've spoken to them several times. And because we were concerned since the drainage issue was between our property and theirs, we wanted to make sure they were comfortable with the contractor and everything else. They seem to be amicable to it, and they even, we've even discussed that they now need to have this done to their property as well. We have also shared our contact information with our neighbor to the east, Eric, and have spoken to him several times. We will install motion-activated cameras in the front of the house and another one in the back. This is to help monitor the property during the periods of vacancy and to investigate if there are any concerns that are raised. There is no signage on the property. I believe that we've addressed each item in your checklist. Ms. Hilton's only issue raised during the 30-day objection period, however, was about covenants and bylaws. After reading the covenants and bylaws, we believe our use is permitted, and an HOA member and someone who was a board member during the last proposed changes agrees, and you have her letter. Our attorney also reviewed the covenants and bylaws, and his opinion is that this kind of rental is permitted. Simply put, we will comply with all current and future covenants and bylaws, share those with our tenants, and require that our tenants follow them. And we will include in our provisions that we will pass along to our tenants any fines that are valid and levied by the board for violations. We want to be good neighbors, and we want to minimize the impact on Ms. Hilton and our other neighbors. So, to that end, we've met with Kristi Morrison and the staff at Visit Stillwater on two occasions just since the planning commission meeting to develop a plan to position this property for rentals for greater than 30 days but less than six months. We have since purchased some advertising and are implementing some other strategies toward increasing mid-duration rentals, mid-duration tenants primarily for the Crestwood property to help with Ms. Hilton's concerns. We still request a short-term permit to be issued to allow us to operate between now and developing the longer-term market and for periods between longer rentals. We plan to invest at least 100% of our net revenue for at least the year into home improvements. We have done this elsewhere and has ultimately increased the value of the property, improves the neighborhood, and frankly increases future rentals due to the higher expectations of shorter-term rentals. We have two letters of support, one from a current homeowner in Crestwood Estates and another from our neighbor from an Airbnb that we have been renting for over a year, and neither have had any problems or concerns. In closing, we got into the short-term rentals after some bad experiences and negative impacts that long-term rentals had on our property and our neighbors. Our experience has been that if done well, a short-term rental has less impact on neighborhoods and the community than other uses that are allowed by right. We hope that we have demonstrated that in each of the checklist areas of the ordinance. Do you have any questions?
Thank you very much. We appreciate the background. Counselors, any questions for Ms. Weiser?
Thank you. Very thorough.
Very thorough. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Randy Hilton?
Yes, sir. Hello. My name is Randy Hilton. I'm the president of the Crestwood Homeowners Association, and I live at 2202 Crestwood Drive, Stillwater. As per our amendments, Article 6, Section 3, filed on January 6, 1984, states that no commercial business can be conducted in a home in the subdivision. He has posted in on his Airbnb ad that no commercial activity can be done in his house, therefore acknowledging the fact that we do have an amendment concerning commercial property, our business. An Airbnb is considered commercial business. Mr. Weiser shared with me that when he purchased the property, he was given a copy of all our amendments. He acknowledged our parking issues, but yet his last renters took two days to follow the rules. A very large truck with a large tool trailer was parked in the street. If he really cared about our subdivision, he would have explained to them that the trailer needed to be unhitched and parked in a very convenient overflow parking nearby. With all the neighbors following our current rules correctly and the addition of this truck and trailer, a fire truck or additional emergency vehicles would not have been able to have gotten through. Another concern is that the renters are self, check themselves in. How does he even know who or how many actually stay in the home? The day the last renters checked in, there were two large pickups with two large tool trailers parked in the street for quite a while. It was very difficult for even, for even, to even get through. One of the homeowners called me to complain that their pickup could not get through and had to go out of their way to find an alternate route. Gratefully, this is one of the few places in our subdivision where there was an alternate route so they could get home. Another question that we have is why he was allowed to conduct business as an Airbnb when he was denied at the planning commission meeting. I realize that he appealed, appealed that decision, but to me, a no is a no until legally changed. I contacted different city officials about that and did get, didn't get the same answer twice. The one I chose to believe was an answer that came from the city attorney's office that no, that answer was no, he could not function as an Airbnb until he wins the approval. Another concern is that Mr. Weiser said to me that if the Airbnb did not go through, that was okay. He wouldn't have to pay an extra tax, and he will just have to have his renters sign a 31-day lease. If he does that, then I assume that means that he cannot re-rent the property until the original 31 days has passed. Is this correct? Another concern is that he stated that he had contacted all the local neighbors to the house with complete contact information in case his renters caused any issues. I have contacted a number of the neighbors, and only two have been contacted, and one of them actually goes to his church. One neighbor that attends the planning and commission meeting had stated that he had never been contacted by Mr. Weiser, and he still has not been contacted by Mr. Weiser. I would like to point out that I was not officially notified also that Mr. Weiser had appealed the decision until September 30th, when his appeal was filed on September 18th. I don't understand why it took so long for us to be notified. My notification was not received until after I started making many inquiries as to why the property was still functioning as an Airbnb. To this day, I am wondering what would have happened if I had not approached the city manager's office? Would I have ever been notified about this appeal? Also, the specific person who has conducted an Airbnb in our subdivision that used to be on the HOA board was asked to leave the board because of not conducting proper business. We were never notified an Airbnb was functioning in our subdivision. We have 49% rental property in our subdivision. It takes a lot of work to make sure all our renters follow the rules. We have found a system that works very, very well, and so within just a few weeks after a new semester, we have everybody functioning correctly and with our HOA in mind. We feel that without having a long-term commitment from a renter, we are not going to have that much success with this particular situation. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselors, any questions for Ms. Hilton? Okay. Well, this is new for us. We've not had to decide one of these before. Given that I kind of outlined, I guess, my thoughts on what we're supposed to be doing here, and you guys can tell me if you think I'm wrong. You know, the way we set this licensing requirement in place is that we, you know, basically the question here is, is there something about this property or this house that would make it unsuitable for this short-term rental license? Remember talking, we talked when we passed this ordinance about neighborhood covenants and the fact that we're not parties to neighborhood covenants, and we don't have to or should make any sort of legal determination about whether a neighborhood covenant does or doesn't apply. And so I don't think that's a criteria that we really can or should consider in making any of these decisions. So from my perspective, the only real question for us is whether the house itself and, you know, the circumstances are reasonable for a short-term rental to be conducted there. And if there's a neighborhood objection, or if there's an HOA objection, then that's a part, a dispute between the parties that they can, that they'll have to take somewhere else to court, not to the city council. Any, does that sound reasonable?
I think that's a pretty good summary.
Did welcome first.
Yes.
So given that, are there, from the council, questions, concerns, or thoughts on whether this property meets or doesn't meet the criteria?
In looking at the notes from the planning commission meeting, it looked like the main concerns from the planning commission was the drainage issue. Is that correct? And it looks like that has been remedied at this point to the best.
Drainage is hard, right?
Any other concerns or issues?
I don't. It seems like, I mean, with respect to like some of the compatibility, and I mean, to be in a neighborhood that is already, has some rental units and things a part of it, it seems like that's consistent.
Yeah, and John, can you remind me what the process is? I mean, so the parking issue, it sounds like that was, has been an issue. It sounds like they've told people what the rules are. If there continue to be parking issues, there's a complaint procedure, correct?
Yes.
So there would be the ability for a neighbor to file a complaint?
Yes.
If the license, if they have a license, and if there are multiple complaints received, then we can, we can review this?
Yes, that would be the basis for taking some form of action against the license up to and including revocation, so.
So, I mean, from my standpoint, I don't think there's, I don't see an issue here from the standpoint of whether this house is suitable for this type of a use. It seems reasonable for me, and so I would make a motion at this point to approve the short-term rental permit for 2117 Crestwood Avenue.
Can I ask a question? Your statement about the HOAs?
You can. I can't really, I don't really have legal advice for you on the HOA. I know that we as a council can't decide.
I'm just saying that anytime an HOA, our HOA now, if you approve this, is worthless.
Well, ma'am, I would just point out that their contention from their attorney was that it didn't violate your standards, and so there's a question, a legal question about whether it violates the HOA or not. And I can't make that determination. The city council can't make that determination. So we have to act outside of considering that. So that would be something you have to take up outside of this forum. That said, there's a motion to approve this rental permit.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the short-term rental permit at 2117 Crestwood. Please vote. With a vote of three to zero, that item is approved. Again, I would just say that this is a new permit process for us. You know, I think this is a good thing, you know, in terms of having these kinds of issues and trying to determine these issues, and hopefully we can, you know, this one will get resolved another way. But we as a council are committed to making this process work, and we're going to try to do that, so. All right. Item 8B, update on Strickland Park construction project, CC-19-150. Mr. Scott, tell us what's going on at Strickland Park.
Right now, not a lot, but we're getting close. We, just a little history back. Again, this is a CDBG project for the playground, part of the project. It's a two-part project, two-phase project. The first phase is the playground along with some coordinating efforts with Maya's Promise on Phase Two. So that's kind of where we've slowed down a little bit with some architectural renderings, trying to get some drawings in. Amy and I have spent a lot of time on the phone with the architect. I even, since I've talked to you, I've talked to them again today. So we've ran into just a few little hiccups on some locations of some sewer lines that run through the parks, so trying to figure out where we can place some things. But where we're at right now is we do have the playground. It's here. It's sitting at our Public Works lot. The old playground's been removed. I went to Oklahoma City a week ago and met with the architect, and we can start demoing some more sidewalk and some stem walls that are existing. And then we're waiting on getting some elevations and center points to be able to start reinstall or installing the new playground, along with working with Phase Two and trying to figure out where shade structure's going to go, what type of shade structure, and some of the other elements that have been there. But there's been a lot happening, you're just not seeing a playground go up. And that's probably the hardest part, is you're not seeing anything happen on the site. But there's a lot going on between fundraising, and I'll stop any time and let you.
I just want to talk. I just want to talk. You're doing great.
But there's a lot, just some planning still going on, trying to figure out where we go with certain things. With the playgrounds here, we just got to get a few things buttoned up before we can start putting in the ground.
Anticipated timeline. Love that question, right?
I hope I have plans from the architect in a couple of weeks, and that's their hope. But I've got to wait on that civil engineer before I can, the paperwork from them before I can get started. So I'm hoping within a couple of weeks, we can be starting to put some posts in the ground and, or at least tearing out some concrete and getting started where we can get the posts. We've got to work on drainage, got to work on the fill that goes back into the area, and then start putting posts in.
Yeah, so can I?
Please.
Yes, yes.
So I think one of the really exciting things about this project is that we've had such an amazing collaboration with our community. So we have lots of different funding sources coming in. We have the CDBG grant from the city. We have $200,000 from our SMAC students last year. The Rotary Clubs are donating a little over $6,000 to purchase a swing. As a part of SMAC's donation, the Brown Foundation had donated $50,000 into that $200,000. And in case you haven't heard, we also won, as a community, we won $25,000 from State Farm. Maya's Promise did as an effort to rehabilitate the restroom facility and the shelter there. So we have another $25,000 that'll be coming to this project from that. So there's a lot of moving pieces in terms of funding, but we also want to make sure that we have a really comprehensive vision for how this space is designed. And so we're taking the right time to make sure that we don't do anything in this Phase One that jeopardizes the overall design. So we want to have that kind of full plan in place so that when they start really building out the playground piece that the CDBG money is paying for, that it, we do it in a way that honors the rest of the plans for the park, which is exciting. We don't do this kind of playground. I mean, it's a playground. At the end of the day, it's a park, but we don't do this kind of project very often. We often replace our equipment, but we are redesigning this whole space, hopefully making it a space for our entire community to gather and spend time connecting, and that's inclusive for all kids of all abilities. So it's, even though we're not seeing the progress on the ground, I'm so very excited for the progress kind of behind the scenes, and we'll just make sure that that on-the-ground process starts happening soon.
Even though we haven't started with the putting back in, it's been good because the same crews that would be building a playground have been out in the parks or around the city doing their, continuing doing their work. So this is a project we're building in-house. It saves us some funding that's going in. We do have a deadline, so I mean, we have to be done May, right? I think the first of May, we have to be done, have to be closed out and finished with the CDBG part of it. So that's our, that's our first priority, and we'll make that date as long as we don't have snow on the ground all winter. We'll be fine with that. We hope that. I know, I just jinxed myself, didn't I? Really hoping that in November, we can, we can get started with, with some of the construction and going. I just, we could do a little bit now, but then we'd have to pull out and then come back, and it doesn't make a lot of sense doing that. So we're kind of waiting, like Amy said, until we get everything piled together and go from there.
It makes a lot of sense to not, not start that part of the process until we're sure we've got everything planned out right.
A little bit of planning goes a long way, I think. And it is, it's just, it's a.
It's going to be so cool when we get done, too.
It's a very exciting thing. I know I've had a lot of community members say how excited they were to win that State Farm grant, just because they participated with us for 10 days voting.
When is the last time we spent $460,000 on a park in Stillwater?
Boomer Lake.
Or the pool.
When we redid Boomer Lake.
We built it, yeah.
But get ready, right? I mean, it's the center of our town. We host Special Olympics every year. I mean, what a gem for our community.
Well, it'll be the only one in the state of Oklahoma, correct?
Not the only, not the only one in the state of Oklahoma, but definitely, you'd have to drive over an hour to get to an inclusive, adaptive space like this. So it really is special. I'm very excited.
It's going in right next door to the skate park that we.
Yes. Skate park's been very popular. So it'll change that whole, for those of us that have been around here for a long time, it'll change the whole look of that park when it's done.
It's exciting. We want it done.
I know. We do, too.
Thank you, Jim. All right. That takes us to item C, update on Block 34 projects, CC-19-143. Mr. White. And Mr. Smith evidently. Are you just sneaking behind him? Waiting your turn.
You want to go last? All right. Mark White, Public Works Director. Lauren and I have been working in conjunction over there on Block 34, him taking care of the electrical. And so we've started to remove trees from the block, and we're going to get it ready for Mary Main Street. So we're going to install a path, and the path will go from the north end off of 8th Street, and it'll come through by the shops, picnic tables, and then exit back out into the parking lot to the north. So we'll get that done by mid-November. We're going to go in there and we'll make a six-foot path, and that path will be about two inches, two to four inches deep, and then we'll pack some gravel in there for a good path for people to walk on. Once we get that done, we're waiting until the first of the year, we're going to start to do the groundwork. We've actually received the grading plan from Monty Karn's group. And so first of the year, we'll take out the alleyways, we'll get the block to grade, and then we'll install sod. So that way, you put the sod in in the spring, you don't have to worry about it over the course of the winter, so.
I'd love to hear more about what that Mary Main Street layout is going to look like.
Yeah. I should have brought, I should have brought a picture. For those of you who are not familiar with the Mary Main Street, it's a, something we're partnering with on Block 34 as well as all of downtown Stillwater. And for the four weekends between Thanksgiving and Christmas, Block 34 will have five igloos, holiday geodesic domes on them. Four will be retail. The fifth one will be a hospitality dome. We already have secured all 16 vendors that will be in each weekend. A different vendor goes in the dome, so we have those. So that'll be part of Block 34. We've also secured a live Christmas tree lot that will occur on Block 34, as well as there's going to be an area that is going to have an old airstream with some trees and some stumps for seating, and some activities that will include the fire department and the police department for the public to come down and have smores with firemen, cookies with cops, that type of thing. The hospitality dome will have some different events happening every weekend. We're going to have live music Saturday nights. We also are going to have food trucks, so it'll be a live, live on Block 34, which we're very excited about. I don't want to leave out downtown either. It'll be a partnership with the downtown merchants and things happening there, too. But since we're talking about Block 34 tonight, Mark and Lauren, Monty, thank you for doing all of the pathways and figuring out. Jim Scott's been key, too, to kind of figure out how that configuration is. We want it to be safe for everyone to spend time, because if we're on it now, it's not exactly the safest thing to work on, so we want to make sure everyone has a safe and fun time those four weekends between Thanksgiving and Christmas. So thank you.
I may just add a little bit. From the electric side, we have all the overhead infrastructure removed at this time. We have a little work left to do on the west side of Duncan Street, on the community center side, to finalize that underground there. But other than that, we're off of Block 34 and letting Mark and his team have it, so. Yes, sir. The only electricity left on the block are the ballards, the receptacles for the food trucks, the pedestals, so.
That's great.
Yep.
It's excellent. It's really going to be much more usable, and I mean, I'm really excited to see what Mary Main Street is.
Hopefully it'll start people getting used to coming down and spending time in all of downtown. I mean, Block 34 is a part of that, but really the goal is to make sure everyone spends a lot of time in all of downtown. We have some great things happening, so this, I think, helps begin that process.
Absolutely.
Eric, so. Absolutely. Thank you both. You got some more? Are you just grabbing something? Okay. You want to talk about something else? We'll let you.
Clean up my mess.
Thanks, Mark. Okay, that takes us to item D, Boomer Lake Station Request for Proposal Selection, CC-19-139. Mr. McLennie.
I'll add something to Block 34, too. The tents are on their way, so, the domes. They'll be here soon, yes.
The domes are on their way?
Yes, the domes are on their way.
Is there like rigid?
They are. It's not a pop-up tent.
It is a dome that is going to have flooring built, and it looks like an igloo. It needs to be put together, and it actually has a outer portion of it that is attached to it that will take up to 20 inches of snow and take up to 85 mile-hour winds. So I'm probably guessing we're going to have snow.
Some people buy these for houses, so they actually live in them.
Oh, wow.
It's an investment the city is making, because I can really see this for future uses for the Arts Festival and things like that that happen, that sometimes weather makes it a little bit impossible for things to happen, so.
Are they climate controlled? And maybe you can put like heater or.
We actually are going to be able to put a heater in, yeah, and lighting.
Good deal. All right. Sorry. Now we're on to item D, after finishing item C.
Another exciting item, item D. Going to go over some history first, kind of go back over how we got where we are. You know, Boomer Lake Station was decommissioned in 2016 when we built the new Stillwater Energy Center. I will bring it closer to me. There. We presented to council shortly after that some ideas of adaptive reuse of power plants from basically all over the country and the world. There's been all kinds of things done with old power plants, and subsequently, the council authorized the staff to solicit proposals. And the proposal, request for proposals, there were some specific financial impacts that we wanted to achieve, and each proposal had to address those. Sales tax generating uses was one of the important ones. A purchase or long-term lease price for the property, for the developers to demonstrate the financial capacity to carry out the project, and then list any development incentives that would be requested as part of this overall proposal. We received two. The first one was called Water Works. It was submitted by Craft and Toll Architecture and Engineering. And its basic components were water park, hotel, spa, and restaurant. And its basic components were water park, hotel, spa, and restaurant. They didn't provide a response to two of the financial requirements. They did not provide a purchase or long-term lease price, and they did not provide sufficient evidence to demonstrate financial capacity to carry out the project. Additionally, it didn't appear that they took a full advantage of the proximity of Boomer Lake and Park. The properties were basically separated, and the information we received showed the development simply stopping at the edge of our property versus the Boomer Lake Station property. And there was really inadequate information provided to fully evaluate their proposal. They do appear to have a good team with a lot of experience. They put in a lot of past projects that they had done that were similar, but they didn't address this one specifically to the extent that we had hoped. The second one was Lakeview Landing, and that was present, that was submitted by Lakeview Landing LLC. And its basic components are a restaurant, brew pub, residential, and office space. They responded to each of the requirements in the RFP, and we considered this to be the best approach to generate sales tax. They also integrated with the lake and park. They are proposing a beach, events, activities. There's a boardwalk shown on the, the drawings for the concept. And this was the evaluation team's unanimous selection. And I'm going to show you a few pictures from the RFP for Lakeview Landing. This is an overall view of Boomer Lake Station after all of the work's been done. These are some before and after pictures. You can see it as it looks now in the upper-left. Lower-right is the proposal. Inside, again, upper-left is as it looks now, lower-right is proposed, and they're using a lot of the elements that are in Boomer Lake Station, similar to some of the ones that we saw when we looked at power plants that had been refurbished. Same thing here. You can see that the old boiler has become a bar and seating area in the picture below. And then one of the key features of this is a rooftop deck, and if you, I've been up there. I don't know if any of you have been up there, but the view is probably the absolute best view that you can get in Stillwater. You can see pretty much everything from up there, so it's going to be a really interesting So the alternatives are that we reject the responses and reissue the RFP. We could consider other options for adaptive reuse or demolition. I will note that we do have an estimate for demolition of Boomer Lake Station, and it is in excess of half a million dollars. Or designate Lakeview Landing LLC as the best proposal and authorize the city manager to negotiate a conditional development agreement. And that is our recommendation. Council review and consideration of the final agreement will be part of this process before it is implemented, and we will bring that back as soon as negotiations are complete.
Mayor, I would add that the developer is looking at initial investment of 15 to 18 million dollars. That would put three pieces of property backs on, back on the tax rolls.
I was just going to ask, what's the, what's the property layout that this includes?
It would be the old BLS station, and then the two front lots that front the...
Boomer.
Yeah, that front Boomer and, or Washington, and one used to be Garfield's, and the other was a car wash. City has owned all that.
Do we own all three of those?
Yes. The city has owned all of those for a number of years, and they are not currently on the adware tax rolls because the city owns them. There was a question today, is this a resurrection of an old plan that the city had to commercialize to an extent, Boomer Lake? It is not. I would point out to you that the appraisal price of this property was $450,000. It would cost us roughly $550,000 just to knock down that building and get it carted off. So it seems to me as though this is an excellent opportunity for some economic development in that area, with no other plans for any parkland in that area.
So the proposal would entail the city transferring ownership of these, all three lots, to the developer?
Yes, sir.
And under this agreement that they would use it to build what you showed us?
Right.
Right? That's the idea? Is there a purchase price that's involved? Do we know what that's, that'll be?
That would be negotiated. That could be part of the agreement. The other thing I would say is that, that there would be, part of the agreement would be that if development isn't started by the end of two years and completed, I believe, by the end of two, at least started, that that property would revert back to the city.
Counselors, any questions?
It's exciting to think about a reuse of a property that's currently not providing any sales tax, not providing any property tax, maybe might consider an eyesore in its current state.
Might.
It's, it's exciting to think about reusing it. I love the idea of kind of recycling that facility into something for the community. It's a really cool concept.
Yeah. Yeah, and the, you know, the idea that it would connect into the lake, I mean, you talked about a beach and a boardwalk thing, so that there's some recreation that, that happens there, and, you know, a number of new uses. You mentioned residential and office as well?
Yes, I think they have some retail included, too. I kind of hit the, the high points in the proposal, but there's a lot of detail in there. They did do a very good job of integrating with Boomer Lake.
One of the other things that was not in the RFP that we have since learned is the developer would plan to try to involve local established businesses in operating and managing the facilities that he puts in. So he's made a lot of contacts in an effort to do that, and assuming this is successful tonight, he will continue that effort.
So at this point, we would just be basically approving that proposal as the, as the winner or as the approved project out of the RFP process, and then we'd have to have a whole negotiation and discussion about all the details of what the thing looks like and how much it costs and all that kind of stuff. How much it costs? We're not paying for any of this, correct?
Correct.
And we're not buying this property for, you know, paying for the development of this stuff, although there...
There will be some, there will be some incentives asked in their detail in the proposal, but I think overall, it's going to be a plus for the city.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, it's, the pictures are beautiful. The idea of having, you know, that kind of development in, in that area, where, you know, we already have a ton of people who are out around Boomer Lake on a regular basis, and, you know, being able to walk down that path and walk into retail and shopping and restaurant and that sort of thing. I mean, it's a, it's a really exciting opportunity.
Well, I think it's a great idea, and I like the fact that it, because it's not generating sales tax now, this gives an opportunity for us to boost our sales tax. So I think that's a win-win, no matter what, so.
Okay.
So do we need to make a motion to approve?
Designate Lakeview Landing as the best proposal and authorize the city manager to negotiate a conditional development agreement.
Motion to approve staff's recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve staff's recommendation on the Boomer Lake Station Request for Proposal. Please vote. With a vote of 3 to 0, that item is approved. That is really exciting, really looking forward to seeing that process continue forward and what we can do with it.
It is our hope, Mayor, that we bring that development, proposed development agreement back October the 21st.
Excellent.
We're going to push for that.
Item 8E, approve a three-year lease agreement with two one-year renewal options with American Airlines, CC-19-144. Melissa Reams, how are you tonight?
I'm great. How are you all?
We're getting there.
We're getting through this. Okay. I'm Melissa Reams, Deputy City Manager. I'm here this evening representing Stillwater Regional Airport. Paul Pregel, who is our airport director, is at the National Airports Conference in San Antonio. It's an intense, two-day workshop-type program for airport directors, and I spoke with him this afternoon. He had learned quite a bit today while he's been there, so that's why I'm here in his stead. We are asking for your approval to sign a lease with American Airlines. We are in the fourth year of our agreement with American Airlines, and this lease, which is for a three-year period, the contract was updated pri, or after Paul had left for his conference, so it is a little bit of a departure from what you see on the agenda. The, the term for this lease will be for three years, and then we will renegotiate that lease with American Airlines. The need for this lease arises because we have, for the past four years, been able to waive certain fees, rental fees and landing fees. It is now to the point where those can no longer be waived, and we felt the need to have in a written agreement, an understanding between the two parties involved. We're very encouraged by this lease. I think it shows a great sign of American Airlines' faith in the city and, and in the commercial service that they bring here. The, the lease has been approved by the airport authority in concept, as we didn't have a written document at that point in time, but they gave their approval to enter into an agreement that outlined the rental fees, et cetera. So we are coming to you tonight with their recommendation for approval of this negotiated document.
So this is for rental of the terminal space?
Correct. Correct. The terminal space, basically, where they, where they house, they have an office out there, they have their check-in desks and things like that, so. And there's space out in a secure area.
And the, the rate of, the rental rate on this is that?
It's the standard rate that we charge all patrons at the airport.
Okay. So we haven't been getting any rental fees from them to this point?
Not, not to this date, no.
So we're going to start making a little money off of American Airlines in this?
Yes.
Correct.
That's a good thing.
Correct.
All right. Questions, counselors? I mean, if we don't approve a lease agreement with American Airlines, that would be a problem, right?
We'd like for this to get this done.
I think we should keep them here. I don't know about the rest of you.
Yes, me, too.
Is there a motion on this item?
I totally move to approve a three-year lease agreement with two one-year renewal options with American Airlines.
Actually, the options wouldn't be in there.
So it's just to approve a three-year lease agreement?
Three-year lease agreement.
Okay. Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve a three-year lease agreement with American Airlines. Please vote. With a vote of 3 to 0, that lease is approved. All right. Item 8F, approve a bid recommendation to award the FY '18 pavement management program mill and overlay projects to Haskell and Lemon, authorize the city manager to sign contract documents. Mr. Carnes?
Monty Carnes, Director of City Engineering. We're finally going to do a little work on some streets that people are going to see, so we're, we're pleased about that. I know other people are as well. You approved this project back in March of 2018. Ghost Engineering performed the engineering for the project. You will recall that we were going to combine this with the work we were going to do on Western and Hall of Fame, and that, that effort was not as fruitful as we'd hoped it would be, so we broke this back out, broke that into two projects. The, and we'll talk more at the next meeting about the other project. We received one bid from Haskell Lemons Construction Company for $1,541,051.50. This is a unit price contract, which means that we're not bidding the amount, we're bidding the individual unit prices for the various items of work. And a quick history on that, or a quick explanation, unit price contracts in civil work are generally considered to be the, the most equitable for both parties. The risk is shared by both parties, and then for you, you typically get the best price as the owner with these types of contracts. So that's how this has been designed, it's been bid. I did, I was a little concerned about it just having one bidder, so I did a little checking on No Knots bid tabs, and for September, there was a project similar in scope to ours with almost exactly the same asphalt price. So I'm confident that we did for the low bid, and it had multiple bidders as well, so I'm, I'm comfortable that we have a good, a good price on that. Our recommendation to you is to award a contract not to exceed $1,620,000. The difference of that's about 8%. That allows us to adjust for the actual quantities that are placed without having to come back to you. That's our recommendation.
Thank you, sir. So just to, will you, for the audience, let us know which areas?
Oh, I'm sorry. I meant to tell you that. I'm sorry. This will be Duck Street from 12th to 6th Avenue, and that will also become a road diet. We're looking at Main Street from 6th to about McRoy Avenue. We're going to overlay Jefferson from 12th to 9th. And then you'll remember that we talked about from, on Sanger Road from 51 North to the bridge, how we spent, oh, I forgot, no, the, I can't remember how much, quite a bit of money rehabbing that bridge several years ago, and the dirt that tracks and gravel from that road gets down in there. Our maintenance guys have to go out, spend a lot of time and effort to clean that material out. If you don't keep the dirt and gravel from around those structural members, they get wet, they corrode, we have problems with the bridge. At some point, we come back in and, and have to repair it again. So to solve that, we want to overlay that from 51 to the bridge and about 400 feet north, so we don't have that maintenance problem.
So when you said Duck Street will become a road diet, you mean from 12th to 6th Avenue, it'll be three lanes instead of four?
That's correct.
I think that makes a lot of sense. All right. Counselors, any other questions for Monty?
Motion to approve the bid recommendation to award FY '18 pavement management program mill and overlay projects to Haskell and Lemon and authorize the city manager to sign contract documents.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve this item. Please vote. With a vote of 3 to 0, that item is approved. I meant to note, while Monty was up here, that's fiscal year 2018 pavement management money, right? So we approved that, we've just been waiting on engineering. So when people ask about where these projects are, we've approved money for a lot of projects, but we're got to, everything's got to run through the engineering and planning, and we can get paid.
That's correct. And, and again, the, one of the things that delayed this was we were going to combine that with the fiscal year '19 money that you gave us, because we thought there'd be some synergies there and an opportunity to save some money, and it didn't quite work out.
Well, we're glad to get these projects underway, and looking forward to many more in the future. That takes us down to Resolutions. Resolution 9A, excuse me, Resolution 2019-18. A resolution of the City of Stillwater prohibiting the flying of unmanned aircraft systems during certain public events on October 18th and 19th, 2019. This is our annual prohibition of people flying drones over homecoming events at walk-around and the parade. Counselors, any questions or comments or motions?
Motion to adopt Resolution Number 2019-18. Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the resolution. Please vote. With a vote of 3 to 0, the resolution's approved. Resolution 2019-19, a resolution authorizing the update of the City of Stillwater's multi-hazard mitigation plan. Who wants to tell us about this one?
That plan is developed about every five years. Generally, we receive grant funding from FEMA to, or state emergency management. To develop that plan, it is about four inches thick, and it addresses, I would say, every hazard, but surely not, but a whole lot of the hazards that could possibly happen here in the City of Stillwater.
Everyone we can think of, at least, right, Rob? Well, it sounds like something we should keep updated.
I didn't see you sit there, Rob. I apologize. I would've called you. Did I miss anything?
We're going to abandon.
Sorry. We want those people at home to hear you. We want those people at home to hear you.
I pulled those from my tucker.
One of the things that we're gonna do is we're gonna set a new trend with our hazard mitigation plan this year and we are going to do all electronic. We will have a community side that they can go and they can see all the threats, all the natural hazards that can impact them wherever they're at in town. So new businesses come in, they go, they can look and they can see what impacts from natural hazard standpoints can impact them, as well as the city will have a working side as we continue to build out and look, look at further expansion. We will also have, have that available. So the plan is, instead of having a plan that we update every five years, we will have a plan that we look at every year and we will always have a current plan and we won't have to go back and every five years, try to catch up from the last five, try to predict the next five, we'll always be current.
Sounds awesome.
That's great, yeah.
Thank you, Rob. Councilors, questions or motions?
Motion to adopt Resolution 2019, what did I have to say it, 2019-19.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2019-19. Please vote. With a vote of three to zero, that resolution's adopted. Item 9C, Resolution 2019-20, a resolution authorizing signatories for depositaries. This is our annual motion to, well, actually, we're gonna change this, I think, because of the city clerk, correct? We have a new city clerk and we're gonna change the signatories.
Correct.
Is there a motion?
Motion to adopt Resolution Number 2019-20.
Second.
With a motion and a second to adopt the resolution, please vote. With a vote of three to zero, Resolution 2019-20 is approved. Resolution, this is item 9D, Resolution 2019-22. This is a resolution declaring the intent to consider approval of a project plan and creation of a tax increment district under the Local Development Act, directing preparation of a project plan, appointing a review committee, directing the review committee to make findings as to eligibility and financial impact, if any, on taxing jurisdictions and business activities within the district, and directing the review committee to make a recommendation with respect to the proposed project plan. This is a resolution for us to start the process of potentially considering tax increment financing for the
Boomer Lake Station.
Boomer Lake Station project. So that project that we just approved or awarded, we wanna at least start the process of looking at whether we can do and what that would look like for tax increment financing.
Mayor, if I may, Justin Migus and I have had meetings with local taxing jurisdictions and we've talked with all but one, which is schools, and they had no foreseeable objection to this particular plan.
Good. This is a, I mean, taking city property from zero tax and building, what'd you say, 15, 17 million?
15 to 18 million dollars.
Worth of stuff on it is, is a good benefit for everybody and looking forward to what those possibilities will and anticipating the cooperation of, of all those folks, so that's great. Any questions or motions on this item?
Motion to adopt Resolution CC-2019-22.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Before we vote, I just wanna clarify that this is a resolution to form the committee to start looking at this as an option.
Exactly. This, this just starts a process.
Nothing other than, let's get together and talk.
Yes, and talk.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2019-22. Please vote. With a vote of three to zero, that resolution is adopted. Takes us to item 10, ordinances on first read. Ordinance 3442, an ordinance rezoning attractive land addressed to 717 West 7th Avenue, 713 West 7th Avenue and 709 South Ramsey Street from RSS small lot, single-family residential district to RTM two-family and multifamily residential district. This is the ordinance enacting the item we approved in our last meeting. Councilors?
Motion to advance ordinance 3442 to second reading.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to advance the ordinance to second reading. Please vote. With a vote of three to zero, ordinance 3442 is advanced to second reading. On second reading, we have ordinance 3440, which is an ordinance amending ordinance 3424, approving corrections to the amended Stillwater reinvestment plan, a Stillwater Downtown Campus Link Project Plan and declaring an emergency. These were our clerical revisions to the, to the investment plan. Councilors, we're gonna need a motion on the ordinance and a declaration of emergency if you so choose, separately.
Separately.
Okay. So motion to adopt ordinance number 3440 and amending ordinance number 3424. Stop there, second. We know our roles tonight, don't we?
We have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance 3440. Please vote. With a vote of three to zero, that ordinance is adopted. Is there a motion on the emergency clause? Yes, sir.
I need to verify something very quickly. You don't have sufficient number of council members present to adopt an emergency clause tonight, sir.
We need to hold up on that.
That's why you're up here, John.
That's right.
Thanks for letting us know. So the ordinance is adopted, but we are not going to vote on the emergency clause. That moves us to, on second read, ordinance 3441, an ordinance closing the alley right-of-way that extends from east and west between Duncan Street and Husband Street from 8th Avenue to 9th Avenue and the alley right-of-way that extends south from 8th Avenue to mid-block before 9th Avenue on property commonly known as Block 34, original town Stillwater, addressed as 218 West 9th Avenue. Councilors?
Motion to adopt ordinance number 3441.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote. With a vote of three to zero, ordinance 3441 is adopted. Reports from officers and boards. Mr. Norman?
Three items tonight, sir. Request an executive session pursuant to 25OS subsection 307B4 to engage in confidential communications regarding negotiations and potential litigation against property owners situated in the north Parkinson Road project area. It's my opinion that public disclosure, as mayor, will essentially impair the ability of the city council to prosecute or defend any resulting litigation proceeding in the public interest. Second, request executive sessions pursuant to 25OS subsection 307B1 of the Open Meeting Act for the purpose of confidential communication regarding the employment, appointment, promotion, demotion, disciplining, or resignation of Stillwater City Manager Norman McNichol or City Attorney John Norman.
I thought we talked about that. I thought we were gonna delay that. Exactly.
Yeah, we're not gonna do those tonight. We'll do those when everybody's here. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Norman. Mr. McNichol?
I do have three items, mayor. One, Councilor Jaloski's already alluded to, way to go Stillwater. Thanks to the community, Stillwater Strickland Park received $25,000 in grants, funds for the addition of a fully accessible shelter and restroom as part of the Maya's Promise Playability Project. Grant is funded by the State Farm Neighborhood Assistance Program and was awarded to Maya's Promise. And we're really tickled about that because we, everybody had the community pulled together and a lot of people voting for that.
And we were top five. I mean, just so you guys know, right, I mean, we put in the application and they accepted 2,000 applications and then we were narrowed down to 200 and we were in the top five. I mean, they lured money to the top 40, but we were in the top five of those 200. So Stillwater did a great job voting.
That's awesome.
So on another opportunity, don't miss out on the Stillwater Halloween Festival coming up on Tuesday, October 29th, from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. There will be trick-or-treating, local food trucks, live music, carnival games, and free inflatables. Come in costume. Learn more at stillwater.org on the news page. And finally, the City of Stillwater is holding its Foul Hazardous Waste Collection Event Saturday, October 26th, from 8:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. The event is at the City of Stillwater Convenience Collection Center. Residents are encouraged to drop off household pollutants free of charge. Learn more at stillwater.org in the news.
I got to speak about that event on the TV 31 show this last week and it was really interesting to hear how much of impact making those hazardous, having those hazardous waste collection events makes on the runoff that we produce. Because if you don't turn those things in, people, you know, it keeps people from dumping them down the drain or dumping them into a sewer and, and washing out into the, to the lakes and streams. So really important events. If you have hazardous wastes at your house, please bring them. We'll take care of them.
It's paint, it's pesticides.
Pesticides, fertilizer, old fertilizer that you're using.
There's a lot that you can bring. I mean, clear out your garage.
Absolutely. Councilor Zanotti?
Yes. September sales and use tax collection is up 2.88% from last year. This is an increase from September 2018 total collections by over $70,000. So thank you for shopping local. Continue to shop local, it makes an impact. If you can go online to see the full report at stillwater.org.
Excellent. Thank you. Councilor Jaloski?
Yes. Stillwater can benefit from a complete count in the 2020 census in a variety of ways, including services for low-income families, public safety, and even topics like genealogical research. Make sure you're counted on April 1st, 2020. More information at paincountycensus.org. I actually got my first knock on the door from a census worker this last week, so...
Doing pre-count, pre-something?
Yes, they're, they're starting, they're out there, which is, it's great to see them started. It's so important to get those censuses in.
I've noticed a lot of chatter online from other cities and communities around the country that are starting to talk about making sure they get a complete count of census and I thought, you know what? We've been working on that for months and months. So Pain County and Stillwater are hopefully ahead of, of the game there and, but, but please, please, please be ready for the census at the beginning of next year. I have a, an announcement about Speak Up Stillwater. Speak Up Stillwater is a, a new online platform specifically for gathering your input on community topics. We know that not everyone can make it to public meetings, so by using Speak Up Stillwater, you can participate in decisions when and where it's convenient for you. If you're wondering, this is the second or third or fourth different kind of tool we've, we've brought in over the last year or so, couple of years, to provide the community with as many options as possible when it comes to communicating, discussing topics, you know, bringing, bringing issues up that, that they wanna see addressed. We're doing, you know, I think our team's doing good work on, on bringing these tools and making them available, but they're only useful if you use them. So please get on, check out Speak Up Stillwater and provide your input. It's a, you can go to stillwater.org and find those links. Okay. That takes us down to appointments. We have, item A under appointments, we have the Recycling Task Force and this is, this is exciting and a little bit daunting because we got 30 people who signed up to be on the Recycling Task Force, which is fantastic. It's, it's really great to see that level of interest. I think we, I think we all kind of anticipated that there was gonna be a lot of interest in, in this, but I was surprised and pleasantly surprised that we got this much interest. So it's a little daunting because a 30-person task force is a lot and I think, you know, there are some options there. Councilor Zanotti?
I guess, Chris, I think of 30 people wanting to be a part of this, but I, I don't wanna discourage anyone who's interested, so my suggestion, as I thought about this, would be to set a meeting date and invite everyone who signed up to be a part of this and kind of talk through what you as city staff kind of envision this task force helping with and topics. And I don't see this becoming a 30-member task force committee, but maybe some subcommittees that would come out of some main points that could be brought up and then those 30 people could help support that. But I think it's important, we're always just saying, please, please be involved and please sign up and to have to choose out of these 30 people at this point, I, to me, I don't know, Chris, I don't know if that would make sense to you to kind of have a first preliminary meeting to kind of talk about maybe some things that would, this task force would entail and then there might be some people who will say, you know, that's, maybe we'll wait until there's a subcommittee that I can support, I, you know, that, that would be my suggestion.
I tend to agree. I mean, it's, you know, the applications are all, I think, people who are really interested and qualified and certainly, you know, we wanna give those folks a chance to make their opinions known. I think there are a number of questions in this issue and this area, whether it's, you know, what kind of recycling should we offer, whether it's how do we handle local collection, you know, all that kind of thing. So there's probably some opportunity to break that group up, do some subcommittees and have, you know, groups of 10 go after, you know, more targeted topics, so...
And I think, mayor, you also brought up too that maybe one of us would help be a liaison to that task force committee and use some support, Chris, as you kind of go through this process as well, so there'd be one of us helping out.
And by one of us, I think you mean Councilor Jaloski.
Yeah, I volunteer.
Okay. So given that, I would, I mean, to the extent we have to formally make the appointment, I will nominate these people. Do I need to name them all? I will name them all. Because John's giving me that look.
But we need to have some way to record the team. I think we need to cheer their name, right? I mean, it's really impressive that this many people want to participate in this process. I wish that we had 30 people want to participate in every task force or committee that we, we have lots of vacancies on different boards, so shout their name well.
Bringing, bringing them in and getting them involved in this process, hopefully they, they'll find other ways that they might be able to.
And we're not trying to overwhelm you, Chris. I promise.
I'm perfectly happy with all 30, however you wanna do it. I kinda expected there to be a lot just because our community really likes our recycling. I wasn't. I actually, I thought there'd probably be more.
We're good.
Just find an auditorium and we'll...
Okay. So I'm gonna make a motion to nominate, or I'm going to nominate, these people. Gladine Allred, Kristen Ball, Frank Bloom, Anthony Briggs, Belinda Bruner, Joshua Butcher, Ken Klinkenbeard, Damian Davis, Kira Frisbee, Riley Flack, Madeline Goddard, Tim Harden, Ilda Hershey, Tom Houston, Alicia Johnson, Pat Kennedy, Joyce Konigmacher, Dan Lawrence, Diana Maddox, sorry, Diane Maddox, Steve Mason, Carolyn Moore, Terrence Murphy, Mike Shanahan, James Sines, Gordon Sloggett, Ryan Smith, Aaron Underwood, Brian Whitaker, Alexa Wiles, John Wood, and John Wood, just John Wood, only one John Wood. I would like to nominate those folks, as well as Councilor Jaloski, to serve on the Recycling Task Force.
Second.
We have a nomination and a second. Please vote. With a vote of three to zero, our Recycling Task Force has been named. That's, again, really, it is very exciting.
I have that many, I mean, I just think that's great.
I actually believe that to be historic.
I'm sure it is. Probably not created a 30-person task force before. You know, I, I do think we can break that up and find, you know, some different focuses for, for different subcommittees on that and, again, it is a community-wide issue and there's a lot of interest, so let's see what we can do. Item B, appointment of Teresa Cadavia as city clerk. I will make the nomination since you're up here, Teresa, doing the job already. We will go ahead and nominate her for city clerk. If you wouldn't have showed up, you wouldn't have got it, but you're here. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote. With a vote of three to zero, Teresa is appointed city clerk. Thank you for your service. We appreciate you being here. Okay. At this time, I will recess the city council meeting. Is it recess? I always forget the right term.
No, you're right. Recession's what you'd be doing.
I'm gonna recess the city council meeting and I am going to call to order the Stillwater Economic Development Authority meeting for October 7th, 2019. Trustees, on the consent docket, we have regular meeting minutes and the Economic Development Authority 2020 meeting schedule. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve the consent docket.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote. With a vote of three to zero, the consent docket is approved. That takes us to reports from officers and boards, correct? Did I miss anything?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Norman?
Can I read it? Because they didn't pay attention.
Request for an executive session pursuant to 25OS subsection 307C, eleven, for the purpose of conferring on matters pertaining to economic development, including the transfer of property, financing, or the creation of a proposal to entice a business to locate within the City of Stillwater because public disclosure of the matter to be discussed would interfere with the development of products and/or services and would violate the confidentiality of the business.
Thank you, Mr. Norman. Does anyone else have a reporter announcement? All right. At this time, I will also recess the Stillwater Economic Development Authority meeting. Authority meeting. And at this time, I will call to order the Stillwater Utilities Authority meeting for October seventh, twenty nineteen. On the consent docket, trustees, we have meeting minutes, rejection of bids, receipt of the recycling program, and approval of the twenty twenty meeting schedule. Is there any motion?
Motion to accept the consent docket.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to accept the consent docket, please vote. With a vote of three to zero, that consent docket is approved. There are no other items on the SUA agenda, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn the Stillwater Utilities Authority meeting, please vote. With a vote of three to zero, Stillwater Utilities Authority is adjourned. So at this point, I will reconvene the Stillwater City Council meeting at item eleven, no, I'm sorry, at item fourteen. Is there a motion to enter executive session only on item A?
Motion to enter executive session for item A.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to enter executive session under fourteen A, please vote. With a vote of three to zero, we'll now enter executive session.